Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, February 24th, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks is absent with notice. Councilwoman Brightwell.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Haines.
Present.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Thank you, we have a caller.
Thank you. If you can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda this evening are two appointments and two reappointments.
First of all, we are appointing Ms. Sandra Glass to the Southfield Veterans Commission. Ms. Glass, will you present, please? Ms. Glass is a Southfield resident, she's an eight-year veteran, and she's a 20-year Department of Defense employee. And she's being appointed to the Veterans Commission. She comes highly recommended, and we are glad to have her to the commission. Madam Chair.
Do you want to go through all the? You have?
Oh, we do all of them? Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Carruthers has been on the Veterans Commission since 2013. He's currently the Chair of the Veterans Commission. And also, Dr. Carruthers, he's a retired professor at Baker College, and he has done an excellent job with the Veterans Commission, and would like for him to continue to do that job. In addition, we'll be appointing to the Board of Review. We're asking Mr. Eugene Kelly to please come forward. Thank you. The Board of Review is a very important board in the city of Southfield. It has a purview of your taxes, and if you have a problem with your taxes, your starting point would be the Board of Review in the city of Southfield. And from there, things take steps going into the tax tribunal, but that's just how important the Board of Review is. And we are very honored to have Mr. Kelly to be considered for this position. And Mr. Kelly also becomes, he came very highly recommended. And as a matter of fact, I would just say, our mayor recommended him very highly. And we have subsequent endorsements of Mr. Kelly. And the Board of Review is, and I will say this again, very critical board in our city, and it's a first step for anyone who might have questions about their taxes, to start with the Board of Review. So it is incumbent upon our council to make sure that board is populated with individuals that are familiar with the taxes, and the real estate, and the industry in the city of Southfield. And we have one other, Ms. Carol Thomas, who's currently on the Board of Review. If she's not here, she has been appointed historically, and she's also, she's been on the Board of Review, and she's very knowledgeable of the functioning of the Board of Review, and it's incumbent on us to make sure that the board is staffed appropriately with individuals who are either familiar with the action of the board, and/or they're familiar with the process of making sure that the individuals who are before the Board of Review, they are handled very properly. So with respect to that, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that the appointments and reappointments that are currently before us, I would like to have them approved for their position.
Support. I have a quick clarification we're being asked to the city attorney. Can Councilman Brightwell make the motion from the podium?
He can. Good evening. Yes, he can make the motion, and then there can be a second for his motion, since he is a member of his body, he can make the motion, he just happens to be down there. And at that point, if there's any discussion, you just carry on.
He did.
But.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to appoint and reappoint to the Veterans Commission Sandra Glass and Dr. Rodney Carruthers, and appoint and reappoint to the Board of Review Mr. Eugene Kelly and Kiara Thomas, as presented in our documents for the terms listed. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, congratulations. Our city clerk will now swear you in.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the city charter of the city of Southfield, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the Veterans Commission or the Board of Review, and and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, and state of Michigan. Please say your name.
Eugene Kelly.
Sandra Glass. Thank you, according to the best of my ability. Thank you. Ms. Glass?
Our first presentation is from the city assessor.
I get the word.
We have Board of Review meetings that are starting in March, and he just wants to let
Yep, I said.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. people know what to expect should they want to come before that board.
Yeah, good evening. Could you say about a brief presentation about the Board of Review? The Board of Review's mission is to be in place with appointed members and provide taxpayers an impartial panel that hears property appeals and makes informed and objective decisions for compliance with the General Property Tax Act. The March Board can do whatever is necessary to make the assessment role comply with the General Property Tax Act. The purpose of the board is to ensure transparency and fairness in property taxation by upholding an equitable taxation system for all Southfield residents. They are required to hold an appropriate number of sessions in accordance with the city charter and the General Property Tax Act, which is three annually, in March, July, and December. In those sessions, they render fair determinations on various property assessment matters, respond clearly to taxpayer appeals, and deliver concise decisions on each manner. They are the body that upholds the integrity of the certification of the assessment by being a system check and balance. The board has to adhere to state law and city charter. Because we have a city charter, the points of the state law that they are required to adhere to is training sessions every two years for each member, and then the composition of what the board can do in July, March, and December. Each one has different regulations. The points of the city charter that regulates the board states that the board shall convene at 9:00 a.m. on the first Monday in March at the Civic Center, then continue in session for a maximum of six hours each day for the next three days. Section 910 states that the council shall appoint a Board of Review consisting of three freeholders, each of whom shall be a qualified and registered elector of the city, and that the board shall have all powers vested in and be charged with the duties imposed by law upon the Board of Review and townships. The council also provides for the giving of notice to the public of the time and place of the meetings. The assessor is required to provide notice of these new values and the dates and times of the board at least 14 days prior to the first meeting. The city's notices were mailed out on February 14th, and it contains various different information, being assessed values and taxable values the current and prior years with the change, the assessor's reason for the change, the inflation rate, estimated change to the annual taxes from this change, principal residence percentage, and then whether or not a transfer of ownership had occurred in the prior year. It also has classification and current owner information. The inflation rate for this year is going to be 3.1%, so all taxpayers should expect to be increased by 3.1% on their taxable value, while residential properties for their assessed value, which is half of the market value, were recommended to be increased by five and a half percent roughly. Commercial properties were recommended to have a marginal decrease of four tenths of a percent, and industrial properties were recommended to be increased by about 7.14%. Though this will not be an across-the-board change for everybody, you should expect to see something in this manner on the notice. The board dates will be on the 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th of March, so starting this coming Monday. The 3rd, 4th, and 6th will be between 9:00 a.m. and noon, and then an afternoon session between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. And then Wednesday, March 5th, we'll have an afternoon and night appointment between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m., and then 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. Any taxpayer that wishes to appeal their assessment or needs information clarifying it can call the assessing department at 248-796-5230. We request that all taxpayers schedule an appointment, but write-in appeals can also be delivered by the last day. Residential properties are required to appeal to the March Board to retain appeal rights with the Michigan Tax Tribunal. And then any person that still does not agree with the board's decision, after we mail them out, the notices are required to go out by the first Monday in June. We do send them out, you know, pretty quickly, by the beginning of April. They would have to file a petition with the Michigan Tax Tribunal, with the residential deadline being July 31st. Commercial and industrial have a deadline of May 31st, and then classification has a deadline with the STC of June 30th. And to close out, I have some stats from last year. The board processed 303 total value petitions, adjusting six commercial values down out of 10 that they heard. They adjusted 40 residential property values out of a total 213. They granted 24 poverty exemptions and denied three, and then answered 54 personal property matters, which warranted the decrease of about 8.3 million. If the board has any question, the council has any questions, I can take those.
Justin, can you speak to, if someone wants to come to the Board of Review, what type of documentation should they be able to present?
Sure. Anything would be good that helps communicate what they think the value is of the property. We recommend if they've gotten a private appraisal done, we can print them comparable property sales in the neighborhood. They could bring pictures of, you know, damage to the foundation, or any items that would present deferred maintenance that would be in excess, you know, of normal conditions.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
Justin, this is a very wonderful overview, and it's very helpful to the citizens. And just, I hate to ask a simple question, but with your career and your background and your point of being here, this is for the citizens, do you feel that the Board of Review is beneficial overall to the citizens of the city of Southfield for the review of their taxes?
Yeah. We, you know, require the board to make an independent decision. When I'm in the board meeting, I'm just taking notes for the minutes of the board, and they've been very resourceful in looking at all the data and making a good independent decision.
Okay. Okay. And is it beneficial for individuals?
I would say it is. You know, especially if you've bought the house the year prior. As the years go by, after your purchase of the home, the taxable value and assessed value start to separate, and you're going to have a large difference there. So really, the first year is the best year, but I think it is beneficial for someone to go, or at least come to the office, and we can explain the notice and check their record card for them to make sure that's all accurate.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Chair, if I may, this presentation is a product of the boards and commissions of the city of Southfield. Our council, that council is made up of Mr. Hicks, Ms. Haines, and myself. We interviewed Mr. Privilous, and he made a presentation to the overall council in our regular session. But the bigger thing of this is to let you know, let the citizen know that all our boards and commissions perform a very specific function and very valuable function. And as we go along throughout the year, on a monthly basis, we will be bringing a board and/or commission before the council, just like Mr. Privilous has done, detailing what their purposes are and how they benefit, why their position is of benefit to the citizens of Southfield and benefit to the city of Southfield. In doing our interview, Ms. Haines and Mr. Hicks and I, we asked each board, how can we better serve you? How can the council better serve you? And by the council serving you, the city serve you, so you can do your mission better. And I think Mr. Privilous tonight explained that his mission is to help the citizens with their taxes, and he has explained how that is done and how beneficial it is to the residents to do that. So, and as a commercial, we will be bringing these various commissions on a monthly basis. Next month, it will be the Veterans Commission. So, and after that, we can, we will also pick other commissions. And just as a FYI, if you, as a citizen, is interested in a specific commission or board, please get in touch with me. We have 20-some commissions and boards, and/or boards here, and we've brought them forward based on alphabetical order and also the interest of individuals. And so, I just want to give the heads up of why we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, thanks.
And good luck next week when you start the reviews.
Thanks.
All right. Our next presentation is the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Thank you, council. This is the Planning Commission's annual report, which we do every year around this time. It is a requirement of the Michigan Planning Act that the Planning Commission shall make a report, annual report to the legislative body concerning its operations and the status of planning activities in the municipality. So we're, and in ours, we actually, because we work so closely with the Planning Commission, it's the Planning Commission really and the Planning Department, it's really a joint report. Just to touch base here on your Planning Commission, we have seven-member body, most have served multiple years. Current Chair is Jeremy Griffiths, an architect, and then Mr. Willis is the vice chair, he's a retired attorney, and Andrew Grubbers is our secretary. We also have Cynthia Bernoudy, Gotta Good Win Die, Anthony Martin, and Dr. Stevens Gunn. Your planning team is obviously city planner Crode, who apologizes for not being able to be here himself. He really wanted to be. Myself, Thomas Payson, deputy city planner, Sarah Malley, who's now gone over to business development, Suzanne Youssef, our sustainability planner, Alex Bolland, our assistant city planner, and Lisa, our administrative assistant. Just kind of covering our activities broadly, we actually work with five boards. The Planning Commission's the main one. We've had 29 meetings with the Planning Commission this year, 12 study meetings, 13 regular meetings, and three long-range meetings, and then the Wayne Joint Visioning Session with city council, which we look into scheduling another one this year, probably similar timeframe. We also work with the city center advisory board. Were their primary staff liaison for that. There were eight meetings this last year. Public Arts Commission is another board that we administer. They had 10 meetings in 2024. And then the Sustainability Advisory Board had quarterly meetings. And then we actually provide some support on commercial appeals to the zoning board of appeals as well, so we had staff that were providing work for the zoning board of appeals on 14 meetings. Just looking at the general activity of the Planning Commission, we had nine standard rezonings, three conditional rezonings, six of our special plan unit developments, ODD, RUD, DMUCD rezonings, 26 special land uses, 23 site reviews, six zoning text amendments, and 97 administrative site plans. Just for overall, I include the last four years in terms of the amount of, like, development value. In 2024, it was roughly 180 million. 23, 24 million of that was administrative review work, the rest of it was things that came to the Planning Commission and city council, so larger projects. Compared to last year, which was about 78 million, and then 2022, which is 300 million, though 250 million of that was the middle point project approval. So you see how it goes up and down a fair bit from year to year. Quick summary on the six zoning text amendments. There was the same change to the site plan review process where more of the, that was delegated to the staff in the Planning Commission. Marijuana retailer hours were changed, some changes to the fencing ordinance, allowing decorative security fences to be a little taller and be approved administratively. Beekeeping and backyard fowl ordinance amendments, which we're going to be discussing later in this meeting and wrapping that up. Drive aisle widths and parking lots, just a clarification cleanup amendment, and then drive-through restaurant standards into the commercial zoning districts. And then usually just some of the highlight projects that have been through the development review project. There's the Panda Express on Telegraph, outlaw development. That's in permitting now, I believe, or may have gotten its permits. Culver's Restaurant on Telegraph, that one will be in permitting before very long, that was a relatively recent approval. Another outlaw development on Telegraph, North Telegraph. Wellspring Development on Hooper Boulevard. Talos Tower Veterans Village here on Northwestern Highway. Harpo Town Homes, Bush Street rezoning. They'll be coming back for their site plan approval, I think they're planning on submitting very shortly on that. El Carwash, which is a special land use and site plan approval, they're here for a brownfield plan today, but that will be going into construction before too long. Drifter vans, which I understand they got their special land use to add, the sale of camper vans in addition to the customization, my understanding is they're doing very well. Glassman Kia, that hasn't commenced construction yet, I guess there's some back and forth between Glassman and Kia corporate on the final design, so we're still working through those steps. The MUCD on 1911 West 10 Mile Road, there's a new development partner that's been brought in, they're doing their due diligence, we'll probably see some revised plans on that shortly. And then we have Loser Woods Park, proposal with the dog park and the pathway system. Some other planning activities, obviously we work on the capital improvement plan, that's currently in front of the Planning Commission this month. We go into the finance committee, and then it'll be coming to the full body here. LTU Summer Camp, we're hoping to do that for another year this year if we can get enough students enrolled. We are preparing for that. And then the Nine Mile Greenwell Corridor, a lot's happened in that in 2024. Task Force was formed under a memorandum of understanding of the other communities along the Nine Mile Trail. Branding campaign is nearing completion. The section of Nine Mile in Southfield between Prescott and Plum Hollow was constructed this year. We will be doing the tap grant-funded section from Evergreen to Southfield Road will be being constructed in FY 2526, and we found out, just, it was last week or the week before, that we got the order to tap grant for the section from the Service Drive to Greenfield for the FY 2627 year. So we got another large tap grant to do the other large segment there. So all we've left now is that bridge between the two segments over the mixing bowl of highways, and we're working on that one. Some place-making efforts, new art installations, the key from the Norden Brothers Detroit Design Center at LTU, the Brothers, another Norden design sculpture at Nine Mile Beach, and then four murals. Greenfield Gateway Beautification between Eight Mile and Nine Mile, got some new gateway signs, new landscaping putting in around those, and some light pole banners. 2024 pedestrian improvements, we had 13 bus stop enhancements, where we did pavement benches and trash bins, 10 solder baller, additional solder baller on the city center trails, we expanded that area that we first installed, so now there's more lights there. And then four community entry signs, and the intention is to do more of those this year, to get most of the key entry points of the city, you know, branded. Some sustainability highlights, sustainability action plan is under, full draft is under development, I think we got about a third, between a third and a half of it drafted, working through the other parts. Food waste elimination study was before the council last meeting for adoption, so that was done. And then we do a lot of collaboration with Lorenz Tech on this. Our sustainability coordinator works with them on their food hall and the food elimination, working on graduate student thesis reviews, related to sustainability, providing support to grant, sustainability-related grant funding for the university, and looking at, working with the Environmental Alliance on the campus, and working also with the summer camp and the civil engineering prospectus course on sustainability issues. And then we have had some other highlights, education outreach, we do a variety of events, and we have reusable grocery bags and some other items. Twenty-twenty-four pedestrian improvements. We had thirteen bus stop enhancements where we did pavement, benches, and trash bins. Ten solder baller, additional solder baller on the city center trails. We expanded that area that we first installed, so now there's more lights there. And then four community entry signs, and the intention is to do more of those this year to get most of the key entry points of the city, you know, branded. Some sustainability highlights, Sustainability Action Plan is under, full, full draft is under development. I think we got about a third, between a third and a half of it drafted, working through the other parts. Food waste elimination study was before the council last meeting for adoption. So that was done. And then we do a lot of collaboration with Lorenz Tech on this. Our Sustainability Coordinator works with them on their food hall and the food elimination. Working on graduate student thesis reviews, related to sustainability. Providing support to grant, sustainability-related grant funding for the university. And looking at, working with the Environmental Alliance on the campus. And working also with the Summer Camp and the Civil Journey Prospectus course on sustainability issues. And then we have had some other highlights, education outreach. We do a variety of events, and we have reusable grocery bags and some other items to use to engage the public and try to get some of our educational materials out there, get them to take our sustainability survey. Done some articles on sustainability topics in Southfield City Source. And had, the Sustainable Coordinator is starting to do some sustainability sort of video pieces with Cable Fifteen. We got a couple certifications this year. Charging Smart Program Bronze Designation is our first year out of the gate. Our actual programs to encourage and allow charging got us to that level. We'll do a little more to try to get a better rating this year. Michigan Green Communities, our first year we got a gold designation. And we think with the addition of the food waste elimination, we might be able to get the platinum, which is the highest level they do. It's a new level they just added. For Ann Arbor, I think we're going to beat them. And then the United States Conference of Mayors Climate Protection War, we got an honorable mention on that. We have had, been pretty active in the grant area. These are all the grants we applied for in 2024. We got all but one of them. We didn't get the Reconnecting Communities Grant, but that was a really competitive grant program with a, it had a good-sized bucket of money, but it was really aimed toward larger center cities more than it was suburbs. But the fact that we got the tap grants that we got shows that we're still doing good work on that. But we got our DIA Partners in Public Art Grant, DTE Tree Grant, They Keep Michigan Beautiful Grant, Michigan Infrastructure Office Technical Assistance, the MDOT Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, which is on the agenda today under consent to be able to execute the contract to do that. Oakland County Access to Transit Program, which we've been awarded funds to help us do the design work for the bridge over the mixing pole for Nine Mile. And then the tap grant that we were awarded for the Evergreen to Southfield. And then the one we just got, we didn't include it in this report because it got awarded in twenty-five, not in twenty-four, but the one we just got for that section from the freeways to Greenfield. So pretty pleased by the luck we've had with these grants, and you got to play to win. So we get in where we think we've got a good shot at it. We do a fair amount of training. Most of it, I'm not going to go over this at a high level. We do a lot of training with the American Planning Association. A number of our planners are American Institute of Certified Planners certified, and you have to do continuing education to keep that certification up. And that certification is through the American Planning Association. So we do a fair amount of training with APA. Also the Michigan Association of Planning, which is the Michigan chapter of the American Planning Association. And then the International Council of Shopping Centers. Additional training through State of Michigan, a great deal of Eagle-related stuff due to our sustainability efforts, and Redevelop Ready Community. Oakland County has planners gatherings, various events through their Economic Development and Planning Group that we attend and work in. And then a couple of other things that are, members of our actual Planning Commission, who one of who's an architect, gets some of his own additional training in this area. Twenty-twenty-five Planning Community Commission Initiatives. These are things we're looking to, for the Planning Commission and the department are looking to emphasize over the coming year. We always do, to do a little bit of a visioning as part of the annual report. We want to look in more depth at the ADUs and tiny homes, maybe move that a little further, focus on that. Infill housing in single-family districts, your one-to-four unit buildings, your duplexes, tries, and quads. And then missing middle housing. We'll probably bring you some stuff to council study meetings to discuss that in more detail. And then reuse and redevelopment zoning amendments. We're looking at ways to make mixed use or flexibility in development standards, discretion in development approval processes. To try to get a lot of our older buildings that might need some additional new investment and maybe are adaptive reuse, how do we make that easier? How do we encourage that? And try to get that investment into those buildings, get them occupied, get them productive, and, you know, build small businesses in the community, but also build a tax base. Other zoning amendments, consolidation of similar commercial zoning districts. We, we're looking through with the Planning Commission at some of our commercial zoning districts, which we have like eight. And some of them are very, very similar and probably could be consolidated. Would make the code a lot simpler and shorter if we could eliminated some of that duplication. Same thing with our single-family residential districts. Some of the ER districts, there's six of them. Some of them have very, very, very similar requirements. It's not really clear why there are still six districts. I can only guess that when they were originally created, maybe there was more of a difference. And over time, they've just become more similar with amendments to the districts. And then public benefit zoning amendments has been something that's been under discussion for a while. That one's pretty tricky because you got to pay attention to sort of state law and takings law. You have to really define what you mean by that. But I know it's been something that's been discussed and kind of remains under discussion. For trail work, we're looking at the additional place making and solar lights on the city center trail, additional work on the Nine Mile Greenway Corridor. And then some additional attempts to find funding for the Rouge River Trail along Valley View. Really, we've gotten to the point where we have conceptual, and now we're looking to see if we can find partners like Oakland County Parks or other funding agencies. Because it's not inexpensive to put like an ADA accessible trail through a woodland area like that. It's, it's a little complicated. Greenfield beautification, want to do some additional banner signs and landscaping. And there's talk about expanding that from Nine Mile to Ten Mile, to make that a little bit bigger area. And obviously, we're looking at the dog park areas and pedestrian pathways at Loscher Woods. Take those to the next level as well. And then Redevelopment Ready Community, we're nearly complete with our Redevelopment Ready Recertification. Just to, you know, we got all of our stuff turned in. We're waiting back for some feedback, and then maybe a couple more items. But we're nearly across that finish line for our recertification. And that is kind of a high-level summary. The full report was in your packet. If there are any questions or comments.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Tom, thank you very much for the report. It has been a very busy year for the Planning Department. And I know that I interface with the Planning Department quite a bit between the City Center Advisory Board and the Art Commission. We are, I want to highlight, and maybe you could go back to the number of grants that, I mean, this is, the department's to be commended for this, for securing all of these grants. I don't know the total figure here, and I'm putting you on the spot, but it's a lot of money that the city has received because we've been aggressive about applying for grants. And I'm particularly pleased now with the tap grant that we just learned about last week for continuing the nine-line Greenfield pathway, Nine Mile pathway from Evergreen to Greenfield. This, the value of this, I don't have it burning me, but it's like.
Yeah, it's going to be eighty percent of the construction total. So I think it's somewhere around like, it's going to be around probably eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it's tremendous.
And then the Oakland County Access to Transit Program Grant was a hundred thousand. The MDOT Shared Streets Grant was two hundred thousand. The Michigan Trans Infrastructure Office, I think that was forty or fifty thousand. The other ones are smaller grants, but those are the big ones. So all told, it's over a million dollars in grants. It's probably like one point two. Not including the one we just got announced that's, that wasn't included in this.
Again, I thank you and the department for seeking these funds to supplement what we're doing in place making and our non-motorized pathway plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Real easy. I don't like to belabor something thoroughly, but are any of these grants matching grants?
Yeah, the, I think basically many of them have a match. The tap grants, it's an eighty-twenty. It covers eighty percent of the construction cost. You've got to cover the other twenty, plus I think you have to cover some of the architectural engineering as well. The Oakland County Access to Transit Program, I believe that's an eighty-twenty as well. We're going to have to put in more than twenty probably because the preliminary engineering for that project's more than a hundred grand for the bridge across the freeways. Safe Streets and Spaces Grant had no mesh. That's just two hundred grand we got for doing the thing. So that one was pretty nice. When I saw it was a no mesh grant and improving bus stops was one of the things you could do, I'm like, we already do that. Let's get that money and do more. So yeah, we ended up, effectively that triples what we're going to spend in one year on that. Basically, what we would normally spend, we're going to do three times as much as we would normally do in one year with that money.
Makes it worth it to me. With the mayor, I think this is awesome. Eighty-twenty is also, some of them, hey, it's better than a hundred. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Tom, good presentation. This is just a perfunctory question that, that I always ask. What is the most challenging thing in the Planning Department right now, given out city size, that you can think of?
We're pretty good at handling the kind of the day-to-day work we do with a lot of different boards. Taking on a large initiative like rerunning the whole zoning ordinance or when we have to finally do another master plan update, that's when we have to bring in consulting help. We just don't have enough like spare staff time to absorb a large project like that. So we kind of have to identify those initiatives, budget for them, and then bring in consulting help to kind of be a force multiplier to do those larger planning projects. And that's, you just got to be thinking ahead because you got to get that into your budget, you know, as consulting services, and then bring those folks on board and get that done. We know we have to update the master plan every five years because that's part of state law. We go after pieces of the zoning ordinance instead of doing an overhaul just because we can do the pieces that are real broken quickly. Overhauling your whole zoning ordinance is like a two-year process. It's, it's a heavy lift for the Planning Commission, for the council, and for the staff, even when you bring in consulting help, because you got to go through that whole ordinance, and it's three hundred and eighty pages. Make sure that it's all consistent. If you reorganize it, you clean up things and modernize it, then you have to kind of vet it thoroughly. So it's just that, you know, we're, we're a lean organization. We get a lot done with the few people we have. But some of those bigger lifts, that's where we, we would probably have to really be thinking ahead and get that in the budget for some consulting dollars to bring in a planning firm. Because you don't want to hire somebody for a one-time purpose, but, you know, like full-time in with benefits. But bringing a consultant out, consultant on to do a project like that can be a smart way to do it, if you get the right people.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
So, so Tom, I echo the, the comments by the mayor and other council. Good job. My question relates to, I'm sure you've seen the Project Garden McComb and how that's coming to fruition and how they had a vision for the mixed use of, you know, stores and a variety of other things. The report you gave for the last year, how does it align to your overall master plan? And is there a, a vision that you all see something similar to that for Southfield?
Well, I mean, I would say that the Northland Plan is that sort of mixed-use dense area and the city center. Those are the two areas we're really looking to kind of get that. So I'd say if we could get the Middle Point Project built, that would transform that area. And then the Northland Project, if we can get that to move along, that also would transform that area. I think we also want to look at some of our office corridors and think about, what's the next generation of the use of those buildings? Because those are generally well-built masonry buildings, but like we have a lot of open office space that we're not, we're underutilizing. And maybe we should consider allowing a greater mix of commercial uses in those buildings, if properly designed and thought through. That's something I'm looking to bring to the Planning Commission in April, that discussion. Because we are seeing a lot of that OS zone property. We have like four hundred and nine parcels that are zoned that. And many of them are underutilized and like, they're getting where they need to be renewed. You know, someone needs to go through and do the electrical, the plumbing, the roof. They need that new investment to give them another twenty to forty years of life. And they're good, solid masonry concrete buildings that, so if they can get them before they go completely sideways, I think they could have a whole nother forty years of productive life. And they're a good-sized building for incubating your small businesses. You know, they're not the giant buildings where you got to be taking a suite that's twenty thousand square feet. One suite in that building is probably twelve hundred square feet. Well, that's a local small business. And that's one of the values of some of these older buildings, if you can get them to a usable level, is they can act as your local business incubator. They can allow your entrepreneurs to have a place to start when they're ready to leave their house and have a commercial space that can go into a place where they can afford the rent, and it's got street frontage. And, you know, it allows them to kind of get started, and then hopefully you grow those local businesses into medium businesses, and maybe some of the local medium businesses grow into large businesses. And hopefully they stay put, or parts of their operations stay put. You know, a lot of people work for small businesses. Like, small business growth is a great way to diversify your economy and build local wealth in the community. So I think looking at those buildings that are underutilized as assets that maybe we can use to encourage that kind of growth, I think that's an opportunity we should be looking at in more detail. And I'm going to be pushing that with the Planning Commission this year to have that discussion. Bring that from them to you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, Tom. I echo my colleagues' remarks. You're definitely a busy department. And these are only the projects that have, you know, come through council. There's, there's many more that don't even make it after reviews or revisions or someone has an idea and it just, it doesn't necessarily work out. So we do, we do appreciate the time and effort for the entire Planning Department. Do you need us to formally accept the report?
It's, it's in a receive and file.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the report as presented.
The motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to receive and file the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report. Any further questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we're up to the communications portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employer, city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this, this section shall be directed by the president officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the president officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the president officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the president officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comments during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communication, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be warranted. Any comments will be made after communications has been finished. That's when council may respond, once communication is finished by all speakers who have signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please have respect and give each speaker their, their due respect. And please no comments or hooting or hollering while they're speaking or after they're completed. Our first speaker is Myron Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Myron Thomas. I'm a resident of Southfield, been here for twenty years. I appreciate the time and effort that council have been looking at the planning. I also appreciate the response to the emails that I did get. And the only issue that I wanted to bring before, I brought it before in, in private, but I'll bring it here, is that given that now that Ten Mile is now being constructed and under construction, planning may want to review all of the other lights at the other mile roads to ensure that there is proper use of flow of traffic. I use that because approximately nine o'clock, approximately on, what was it, Sunday? I had to sit at a light for a minute and a half at Bird in Nine Mile, and the light only lasted for about ten seconds before it turned yellow. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of it. I know I brought it up in past, and I'll bring it up again. The other concerns that I did have, I brought up in, in closed session, so I won't bring them up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Max. I'm sorry, cannot read the last name. All right, thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Max Neizer, City of Southfield resident down on two-one-three-zero-zero Wallace Drive. I came before the council about a year ago and explained an idea for redeveloping a pair of properties that I own to build a pair of duplexes. Thought the, the presentation tonight was right on point. I'm trying to help provide the missing middle of housing. Went through the process, got unanimous approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it was recommended that my, my proposal be approved, and then it wasn't voted on. So I'm just coming back this evening, especially after having seen the approval process for the Bush Street development, on what needs to change about my proposal to be met with this council's approval.
All right. We'll respond to all the comments after communications.
Okay.
You have two minutes left, if you have anything else you'd like to...
Sure. Or, if we need to set up like a meeting, just to discuss in further detail. You know, I have my email and my phone number posted on the sheet. I would love to talk to somebody to understand how I can align with the city's vision. The duplexes were just my idea. I'm willing to do other things. So, just curious, what would meet this council's approval for additional housing? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. A decade ago, there was a town hall on septic tanks. Do you know what the issues were? Seeing how some of you weren't there, or were not on council, have these issues been resolved? No. Do you have the correct blueprints for the sewer line tap-in, or do you just have suggestions? A decade later. YouTube, Southfield, City, Linkup ordeal in Southfield. This was last year. You did not know where the tap-in was, which caused a resident expensive money to have this done. So, why don't you want to have a town hall, seeing how you don't know where it's at, seeing how you have not resolved the issues? Four months ago, administrator told you that he was going to give you the names of residents or addresses, or whatever, of people who said no to their easement being used for the sewer line on Circle Drive. Did you receive it, yes or no? Did you ask, yes or no? Why not? These should be simple things. Or, did you even make them an offer for their easement? Or anybody on Circle Drive, an offer? That might have been the hindrance of it. YouTube homeowners faced expensive sewer line switching in Southfield. Now, it's probably about $75,000. Will that be, since you want to make us connect when we sell our homes, the price that our homes are now depreciated to, dropping our taxable value, because you've just put a lien on my house of $75,000? And I'm glad the presentation was made today, so he can hear this clearly, that there's about 700 of us, our properties' taxes should be all dropping, because you want to put that on. Residents who have connected to the city sewer have had their basements back up with sewer water. Our basements are not retention centers. Some of them went to the hospital. The newer us do not want to go to the hospital, because we are doing this. To say that you cannot do this, or cannot fix this after decades, is wrong. When Ms. Banks got on here, within her first month, there were pipes on the ground dumping sewer water, or sucking up sewer water. She had them removed.
Your time is up. Our next speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening, Stacy Jackson, President of Beachwood Acres Homeowners Association and Southfield resident. I'm here today, actually, just to comment on the past two council meetings that were held in this chambers. I was concerned when we had city council people pretty much tell residents that it appeared as if we were just trying to come here every week to get a different answer to questions. I believe that was preempted by the first council meeting, where our Southfield City Administrator, who was visibly upset, that said he was sick and tired of Southfield residents coming here to address the same concerns, that he was tired having to research information to answer questions, and that he was fed up being made to feel like he did not care about Southfield residents, and closed his comments by saying he did not care if it cost him his job. Please let that sink in for a minute. Your Southfield City Administrator told your Southfield residents that he was sick and tired of them coming to this chamber to address their concerns to their council. He told your Southfield communities, your Southfield families, your Southfield constituents, that he was sick and tired of them coming here to address the same concern, and that he did not care if it cost him his job. Perhaps at times, it does cost someone their job. We're not coming here like kids, like as if we're coming from mom to dad to see who will give us a cookie before dinner. We're coming here because this council and our elected officials are refusing to hear the real question. This is not a Jeopardy game, where you just give us an answer to a question we didn't ask. The residents on Circle Drive never said that the City of Southfield installed sewer lines, then came back and dug them up. What they said was, they saw the City of Southfield bring out the pipes, lay them on top of the ground in preparation of excavation to do the job, but never did. They came back, retrieved the pipes, and took them away. Lastly, I have a question. There's a reason why there are no sewer lines. The Southfield City Administration offered L T U $7,000 per vacant land for property 25 years ago. I would like to know how Beachwood residents were only offered $2,000 25 years later for the same amount of space.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I'm absolutely shocked to know that you actually think about raising the residents' taxes. Now, my question is, are we going to get a swimming pool in the ground this year? This year? And I'm so glad this is an election year. What are you going to do with the extra money? Put it into Northland? Put it into one of the mayor's ventures? What are you going to do with the money? I think we should take the time and send every resident notice that this year, their taxes is going to go up 3.5%. I think you should show the people that kind of respect. People are sick and tired of living in the highest taxed city in Michigan, and we get nothing for it. We got a council that tells us, "You're sick of us." We come up here and say the same thing. If I wanted to come up here every time you have a meeting and sing "We Shall Overcome," it is your job to listen. It is your job to listen. What I want to know is this. When will we start getting what we pay for? Are you going to lower the taxes for everybody who got a lien on their house based on septic tanks? Are you going to lower the taxes on everybody who have to connect? What about our seniors, who just want to live home until the day they die? You know, it's cheaper to live at home and receive care than it is in after-care home. But it seem like you just want to run these people out again, so you can get ownership of their homes. Enough is enough for this council. Enough is enough. I'm asking, I'm not asking, I'm demanding, that you send every person a notice, long before the assessment even starts. It's our tax money, and I'm quite sure everybody would know this, would want this. Send every homeowner a notice that on a home, a condo, or whatever, enough is enough, is enough, with this city government. We're going to make it work, and I'm hoping Joe Person is watching today, because this is the time that the Black Caucus got to rise. This is the time that the Southfield Laker Dem Club got to rise. Dr. King once said, "I may go to heaven with a battered and bruised body, but I will not go to heaven with a battered and bruised soul." Y'all got bad souls.
Well, that concludes communications for this evening. Just a couple of comments. Mr. Thomas came, he did have, he did speak with a couple council members about some of his concerns regarding some of our zoning ordinances. I know that last year, the Legislative Committee did take up some of his concerns. I have not yet followed up with the council members who met with him today, but we will follow up and see what those concerns need to be discussed in the Legislative Committee for any potential changes. We had a speaker who came about housing. I recommend that, you know, every project is different, and if you have land that you're willing to develop into housing, then I would recommend that perhaps, sit down with the Planning Department. They are more than happy to help you, guide you with potentially what didn't work with your original plan, and then help you with going forward with a plan that would go through and get approval from the city council. We had a resident who spoke about Circle Drive, and questions about the sewer line. That's an issue that's over 20 years old. I don't know, Mr. Zorn, did you want to comment on that? I know that's also before your time as well.
There was no sewer line removed, permanent sewer line removed from Circle Drive.
Can't hear.
Well, Lawrence Tech...
Can't hear you.
There was no permanent sewer line removed from Circle Drive. Well, Lawrence Tech was building the one dorm. There may have been some type of temporary water line. Sewer line, I can't speak to what the temporary arrangements may have been, but the city was not partying to that. That was a private contractor building that, obviously with the appropriate permits from the city, but that's not a city's project. And the documents that were presented to us, there was a statement that said, "We removed a sewer line," and...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, the last two speakers talked about a number of issues, and one of them was, you know, calling out our council, because we made comments that we do care, because we were told that we don't care. And as usual, as soon as the speakers make their comments, they leave, so they don't hear our responses. But, they asked for a town hall. 10 years ago, the city did have a town hall at their request in their neighborhood, and there were changes made to the septic sewer ordinance 10 years ago, based on some feedback that we did get from those residents, and from that neighborhood. Unfortunately, you know, we can't always appease everyone, but we did make significant changes to help ease some of the concerns of the neighbors, especially some of the speakers who came here this evening. But, it does feel to this council that when you come back every week with the same concern, and we've addressed the concern every week, that you are trying to get a different answer out of us. We have ordinances that talk about septic sewer. We have a building department, and a code enforcement department that ensures that there's a safe, that the septic tanks are safe, that they're not leaking, that people want to connect. We will help them through that. We also offer different types of loan programs for those who have a low income, for connecting to a city if they want to get rid of their septic tank. We offer a number of programs, but because it's not free, unfortunately, we still have complaints. Again, we have a city of over 70,000 people, and trying to make everyone happy is almost an impossibility, but we do our best, given the circumstances. Every neighborhood is different. Every homeowner has their own issues. There was mention about people, you know, water in basements, and, you know, the city did camera every line, and there was nothing wrong with those lines. They were clear. In one particular, I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, in one particular instance, the person turned his sump pump off. Another person lost power, and their sump pump wasn't working. So, every situation is different. Just because we have someone who comes to our council and says, "This happened, and it's the city's fault," there's always, there's always three sides to every story, and I would just like to put it out there, that, you know, we do get these complaints. We do investigate. We do our due diligence. But unfortunately, sometimes the homeowners don't like the outcome, but we do respond to them, and we do try to help them as best we can. Mr. Mayor, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, I organized the meeting we had, and we invited those residents that were on septic or well. We have a number of people in the community that are still on well water. They're not attached, or tied to, the city water. And we had experts come in from Oakland County, which is directing local communities to make sure that septic tanks are inspected every three years. We also had a person come in and explain, it's not just the septic tank failing, it's also the septic field. And the cost of a septic field could range up to $60,000. So, when you're looking at, you have a failing system, is it cheaper to connect to city sewer, or rebuild your field? Nobody was required to hook up with the city sewer. But, you can't pollute, is the issue. You can't allow sewage to leak out into your neighbor's yard, your yard, or, in many cases, in the west side of the city, it's the ravines, and so, obviously, it ends up in the Rouge system. So, following that meeting, which was held at Levy School, council agreed to lower the tap fee, to make it more affordable. We set up the 3% and 0% loan programs, and we've had a number of people take advantage of this. Actually, since that meeting, we've had a reduction of about 550 people tie into city sewer. The point of that meeting was education. We're also concerned with the number of septic tanks. We have people that have a septic field in their yard, and also are on a well. I'm concerned about that. And so, we had an expert talking about how not only should the septic system be tested, or reviewed every three years, but also make sure that if you're on well water, that it needs to be tested. And then, that meeting provided the resources to have these things done. So, I think a lot of good came out of that informational meeting that we had. I wouldn't call it a town hall. I would call it an information session, and again, we voted, or invited, rather, to those people that were identified on septic, to attend. Another thing that came out of it was, we did a group pricing, because one of the most expensive things about connecting to city sewer is the trench, to trench from the house to the sewer main in the street. And so, we offered a discount, you know, again, if a number of people signed up, then we would have a lower rate for... then we would have a lower rate for, uh, the trenching. So it's, it's not like the city hasn't done anything. The, these are steps that, that we've taken and we're continuing to take. So I just wanted to add that the things you've said, uh, council president, are correct.
Thank you. Was also mentioned about a pool. I believe it was two years ago, we had an idea for a splash pad, it went through the process. Uh, the neighborhood that, uh, was going to go in, which was the, um, in the Beachwoods, um, Parkland, uh, unfortunately, there was a lot of pushback and that project was scrapped. The council did meet about a month ago, uh, with the city administrator and our Parks and Rec director for steps forward to come up with an idea for a pool. And we are taking those steps necessary because we do feel that it's something important that our Southfield residents deserve. So we are, we are working through that process now. Uh, another comment was made about, um, taxes and assessing. As the city assessor, um, mentioned this evening, their board, you know, everyone did receive their city assessment or should have received their city assessment, uh, this last, about two weeks or so. Uh, next week, they're gonna start having hearings if you wanna disagree, if you wanna try to get a lower tax rate. Um, but that's, that's part of homeownership, that's part of how the, the city works. These are not, this was not a tax increase, this is an assessment increase or decrease, depending on your property. And that, what that means is if, if you have an increase, that means your house is more valuable. And if you've been in your house for a number of years, that increase is also minimal. So depending, you know, every, again, this is one of those situations where every parcel, every property is different. But we do have steps if you disagree with your taxes, um, or your assessment, I should say. Um, last year, the city, actually for the millage rate, we went down by .2 mils, um, as, as part of our, uh, overall budget that we approved last year. So we're always, we, we definitely don't like the, when people, when we hear residents or business owners say that Southfield has high taxes. You know, there, there's a number of things that can contribute to that. And again, every property is different. But for every dollar that you spend, that you pay in taxes, only 47 cents goes to the city. 47 cents goes to the city. 43 cents goes to schools and the rest goes to Oakland County and the state. So, um, our millage rate is on par with, with other cities. We're actually lower than some of our neighboring cities. Um, smaller cities have our six or seven mils higher than Southfield. But that's why I said every city, every property is always different. And that's, you know, one of the joys of homeownership. So, um, but if, as the city assessor said, if you have a problem with your assessment, you feel your taxes are being adjusted incorrectly, uh, please call the assessing department and make an appointment for next week. They will be around, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for about six hours each day. And they will be happy to, uh, talk with you. Anything else, council? Which, I thought I got all of them. Yeah, so, uh, you know, every, again, that's one of those, every project is different for the housing. And I mentioned, you should, uh, speak with the city planning department to figure out what, what works. You know, we did approve, um, the, the rezoning for a potential project a couple of weeks ago, but that was, again, a different situation. That was a big empty lot, it wasn't in the middle of a neighborhood. So, but the planning department is more than happy to find a path forward, uh, for your, your ideas and your ingenuity with, with your housing. All right. Nope, sorry. But, you know, if you stick around afterwards, our, the deputy planners happy to discuss it with you or he can give you, you know, give you a call tomorrow. All right. Thank you, council. Next on our agenda, we do have a set of minutes, um, that, from January 21st, there was one small correction from when this was brought to us a few weeks ago. That correction has been made. I don't know if council has the time, had a chance to review. Um, if they have, I'm more than willing to take a, a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January 21st, 2025.
Support? We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoake, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve the January 21st, 2025 meeting minutes. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can I just ask, you know, when we have these issues here like this, that the, uh, corrected areas be highlighted?
The corrected areas were removed. There was information that was that was, uh, there was one item that was pulled for further discussion.
Okay.
And it was listed as approved, so we had to remove it.
Gotcha.
That was the only correction.
All right, no problem, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we go on to the next item, can I ask a procedural question? So typically, we make a motion for the consent agenda. But in this case, there's an introduction of an ordinance.
Yes.
So if we make the motion for accepting the consent agenda as is, will we still have to do a separate motion on the, the introduced ordinance?
I'm shaking my head, listening to you. So when we have an ordinance, there's the, uh, approval and introduction. So I just noticed that it was on here, I apologize. But usually what we do is there's a motion made for the approval and the introduction, and then we receive an ordinance number.
So, and, and I had the same question because also the ordinance number was
Out of order.
But this was a last minute addition. So what I would like to do is just remove item A from the consent agenda and add it as item C. Actually, I'll add it as item A under items to be discussed and/or action. And then we'll change the ordinance number to be in the proper order that we should go in.
Yes.
Does, does council follow me on that?
What did you change the?
All right, so
No, no, just the ordinance number.
It's go, the ordinance number will change, no, it's the right ordinance number. We're still good.
That's what I thought.
Okay. No, it's gonna change to 808. And then, under public hearings and site plan, item B will change to 809. Yes. So we will remove consent agenda item A and move it under items to be discussed and/or action. Item B for Boy.
It should be 809.
Eight, eight, correct. Where it's on the last line, it says 808, it should be 809. And then 807 will become 808. And we're moving that under items to be discussed.
So where would 7 be?
I'm sorry?
Where would 7 be?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay. It's still, it's still 807. And then the, the other one, should it go through, is still gonna be 80, 808. Okay.
Neither one changes?
No, we're not, we're just moving item A down to items to be discussed and everything else just stay the same. We're on the same page now?
Tried to.
It's been a long meeting. All right. We have our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Does any council member have an item they wish pulled for further discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve the new consent, consent agenda items. A, which is the early voting extension agreement with Oakland County. B, which authorization to purchase vehicle for the deputy director. C, the authorization to purchase replacement parts and repair services for citywide operations. D, authorization for budget adjustment to Pay Street lighting invoice. E, transportation improvement association membership renewal. F, transfer of ownership of the parcel listed to the Evergane-Farmington sanitary drain. G, approval of M.DOT contract for legislative earmark grant for road construction and water main replacement along Mount Vernon Street from Northwestern Highway to Southfield Road. H, approval of the cost participation agreement for 10-mile road resurfacing from Telegraph Road to Lasser Road. I, authorization to execute contract for M.DOT Michigan Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program. And J, the budget adjustment to utilize McKenna and Associates as an inspection plan review contractor. And lastly, K, authorization to contract for demolition of 21557 McLough Avenue.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoake, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to approve our new consent agenda items, A through K. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And for those I'm sorry. For those listening, uh, just, three of the items we approved tonight, um, were road and/or bus stop improvements. That was about a total of $4.3 million of grant money that the city received for those projects. So again, we just had a nice presentation about grants. And here we go with about 4.3, give or take a couple of dollars of additional grant money for, for road projects.
Yes, additional.
That's, that's excellent.
I was gonna ask, Mr. President, am I in order not to introduce ordinance number?
Well, we gotta, we have approved the introduction of the
Right.
Of the pilot. Agreement apartment. So, I don't, Mr. Mr. Zorn, do you have any, anything additional you wanna add about the pilot for apartments?
The item was discussed at our February 10th, uh, meeting. The, uh, pilot is actually the application that they're submitting by having council's approval. Uh, they're able to get additional points in the process. This is regarding 16400 JL Hudson Drive, former, uh, Michigan Inn. The, um, I suspect as they go through the gyrations of, uh, a low-income housing tax credit project, that there will, the item will be back in front of council. But this initial helps position that for funding from the state.
So procedurally, do you need us just to introduce the ordinance? Or do you need us to, um, approve the introduction of the pilot?
Yes.
Is the ordinance, just approving the ordinance, okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce the approval ordinance number eight, 1807.
Support? We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by, I'm sorry, Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, to introduce ordinance 1807, which is the Mishta payment in lieu of taxes for Hope Apartments. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next two items, um, are, uh, public hearings and site plans. Mr. Planner? We have a brownfield redevelopment plan and tax decrement financing plan and development reimbursement agreement for Elkar Wash redevelopment on Northwestern Highway and 12 Mile Road.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Animal Board. Um, tonight, the Southfield Brownfield Authority would like to, um, bring forward an item that was approved at our meeting on December 17th for Elkar Wash. I have Luke Bonner, who's here, um, representing the, um, the client, um, Gabe Schuman of Elkar Wash. We have a short PowerPoint presentation, after which we'd like to have a public hearing on this item.
Thank you so much for having me. I've had the opportunity to be in front of this council a few times now and, uh, we're so excited to finally be at the one yard line. I wasn't trying to make a football pun on, on purpose, but I guess I did. And, uh, we're ecstatic, I'm ecstatic to have Lou here today. We also have the team from Stonefield Engineering. And if I can go off topic for one second, I heard the, uh, presentation made by the assessing department and the planning staff. And I just wanna say from Shelley to planning to yourselves, this is one of the, been one of the most, one of the best, um, trying to use the right words to, the right words, one of the best experiences I've ever had, uh, from working with the city. You guys have been absolutely incredible. Everybody listens to each other, everybody works together to come up with a great plan. And I really feel like we did it here. We are so excited to open up an Elkar Wash in the city of Southfield. So thank you for the opportunity, thank you for having us. We're so excited to be here today. With that, I'll bring up Lou, uh, if you wanna do your presentation. You, you, do you guys wanna go through the plans at all? I know you've seen them a few times, but, um...
Let's, let's do a high level because we do have this public hearing.
Sure, okay, sounds good. So over the past few months, we've closed on, I think it's a grand total of three parcels at a 12 Mile Northwestern, 12 Mile Northwestern Highway. Which, uh, which one does that, sorry? What's that? Which right is it, this one? Oh, okay. Uh, the quick background on Elkar Wash, uh, we're based out of Miami, Florida. We have now almost 60 locations open in the Broward, uh, Broward Day Counties. In addition to that, we have two locations now open in, uh, the state of Michigan, uh, Brighton and Madison Heights. Uh, Southfield will be our flagship location. We're incredibly excited to open it up. Uh, before I jump into the site plan and the elevations, um, uh, community is in our DNA. We're big, we're big believers in our community support. We support local hospital systems in, uh, in the state of Florida. And also, we've already became very, very engaged in community involvement here as well. Uh, support a lot of youth football teams, uh, throughout the area and excited to do a lot more. Outside of that, we're the official Car Wash and the Detroit Lions. We're honored to have, uh, Mr. Barry Sanders is one of our partners in the business as well. And, uh, it's, it's been a lot of great things. Um, we have two locations open now in Metro Detroit. By the end of, uh, 2025, we'll have seven locations open up. And that big yellow star is the city of Southfield. And we're gonna be opening up our location over here. Um, we're excited to be the, excited to be part of the, uh, the art initiative here in the city of Southfield as well, in Oakland County. Uh, so we're heavily supportive of that. You know, just a few things, we recycle 90% of our water. Um, we have the reverse osmosis infiltration system that we've spoken about, uh, with heated concrete. And really, the, with the equipment is state of the art. But really, just not, um, by greasing 90% of the water, not putting additional strain on city resources is a critical, a critical piece of what we're doing. We're also taking a site with really no landscaping right now, we're gonna beautify the corner as well. As you're gonna see in a few of the renderings I'm about to show. Uh, here's one site rendering. So right now, you're looking at Northwestern Highway in the bottom of your screen and then 12 Mile Road on the top of your screen. And we're situated alongside, uh, Northwestern Highway, our building itself. Here's another perspective from 12 Mile Road, looking southbound. This is another perspective from 12 Mile Road as well. And here's a few pictures of, uh, some of our, um, some of our facilities in Florida. And then I'll jump into the brownfield. Any questions I can answer about the project? Terrific, thank you so much.
If you can just give your name and address, please?
Hi, uh, Luke Bonner with the Bonner Advisory Group. Uh, we're at, um, 1054 South Main, Ann Arbor, Michigan. Uh, we're the, uh, brownfield redevelopment consultant, uh, for Alrog and Elkar Wash. Uh, good evening and thank you for your consideration this evening. The site itself is, uh, it's three parcels, approximately one and a half acres. Uh, there's six buildings on site that are proposed to be demolished. Uh, what qualifies this as a brownfield, uh, is the contamination caused by, uh, the former dry cleaner and gas station at the location, uh, which typically are the, the twoest, uh, the, the two trickiest, um, types of contaminants, uh, when redeveloping sites like this. Uh, in terms of what we're, uh, requesting as part of this redevelopment, uh, from the city Brownfield Authority, uh, we have site infrastructure improvements, the obvious contamination, uh, cleanup and management, demolition, and other site preparation activities. Uh, the total eligible activities under the Brownfield Act that we're requesting for reimbursement is approximately $2 million, uh, which is $1.7 million of activities plus 15% contingency. is approximately $2 million, which is $1.7 million of activities, plus 15% contingency. This is a proposed 30-year Brownfield TIF capture. The total project here is about $4.5 million, with a total estimated tax capture of roughly $56,000 annually. Some of that, which, some of that goes to the city of Southfield's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for Administration, and for its local Brownfield Revolving Loan Fund. That amount is approximately $85,000. So with your support, El Carwash will be able to redevelop these properties, which, like I mentioned already, are contaminated with a couple of the most difficult types of redevelopment from, from a former gas station and dry cleaner. So with that, I'm available for questions, and thanks for your consideration.
Okay, so we'll have questions after the public hearing? Did you want to add anything, Ms. Freeman?
No, thank you.
Alright, so this is a public hearing on the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement for El Carwash Development, located on three parcels, 28810, 28830, and 28844 Northwestern Highway. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record, should you wish to speak.
Hello, my name is Myra Thomas. What I was looking at was the revenue and the recoup, and the one question that I have, and I'm not familiar with the Brownfield project parameters, could you speak a little bit about how that's being received from the, from the city, or how that works? Because I wasn't familiar with that, thank you.
Any, any other speakers? Alright, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Freeman, can you try to explain the...
Certainly.
How the reimbursements work?
Certainly. The Brownfield Redevelopment Tool is an opportunity to help level the playing field for development, so it removes the impediments that are located on a site, helping to recreate a greenfield site. So when the new development is put in, you'll have fresh property to put that development in. The, the investor, or El Carwash in this case, is making all of the investment, and as they pay their taxes, those dollars for the eligible items to, again, recreate that greenfield site are reimbursed back through that tax collection. The city of Southfield will also be collecting a portion through administrative fees, and for us to reuse in the future in our redevelopment revolving fund. And there is a slight error on this sheet, we'll be receiving $77,599 in admin fees over the life of the plan, and in the revolving fund. Again, that helps us with our monitoring of different projects, and the revolving fund is reused in the community to help invest in other properties throughout the city of Southfield. So again, we're reinvest, as they pay their taxes, they're refunded that money that they invested in the site. So the city is not putting out any dollars in advance for this project, we're recouping and paying back the developer for making an investment and improving in our community. We feel that this tool is essential, as many properties are stuck with impediments that are on the property, in this case contaminants and obsolete, and functionally obsolete properties or blighted properties. So we really need to come in and help move that forward by using tools such as the Brownfield Redevelopment Tool.
And how, over how long a period is this reimbursed?
This is over a 30-year timeframe.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. I will take, entertain a motion, if there is one.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Incremental Financing Plan and the Development and Reimbursement Agreement for El Carwash Redevelopment on Parcels 28810, 28830, 28844.
It's been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Haynes, to approve the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan as presented. Any further questions? Yes. The question is, when do you plan to break ground, and when do you plan to open?
Barry Sanders coming to our opening.
Absolutely.
So we're, we've received our soil erosion permit, we're intending to be mobilizing over the next two weeks, three weeks, and there's pressure on me to get, I do the construction as well, so there's a lot of pressure on me to get the store open this year. So I would, I would assume they're either opening December of this year, or January of 2026, but over the next nine months, we'll be open. Thank you.
Thank you, I missed the last screen over in Madison Heights, I couldn't get there in time, but let us know, I'm sure you'll let Shelley know, so we're very big here.
I will be, we'll be cutting that ribbon, we'll be cutting that gold ribbon, or that pink ribbon together, and we're excited to, excited to have you guys there. So again, I'm so grateful to the community and your support. You guys made this project happen, and I'm so thankful to you, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, and good luck.
I did bring my 11-year-old son here today, but he had to get home to do homework, I was hopefully he'd be here today for the presentation.
He came on the right night.
He can watch you on TV later. Alright, item B... Item B is a zoning ordinance text amendment to delete provisions related to the keeping of animals and add a reference to Chapter 113 Animals related to the keeping of animals other than pets. Mr. Planner?
Thank you, Council President. I won't go very high level on this, since you've actually already adopted the new standards in the animal ordinance at your last meeting, you're enacting that ordinance tonight. This is just taking out the old provisions that would no longer be consistent with the new ones, and providing a provision that points people to the new provisions that have been adopted. So this is, what we didn't want to do was repeal the old provisions before we had the new provisions in place, to end up with a gap of coverage. So this is the sequence we went in to make sure we didn't end up where we didn't have a law in place that dealt with the issue. So just real quick, we started this after October of '23, it's been under discussion for a while. We looked at backyard follow, we had a number of residents that were making inquiries about how the rules can be made a little less restrictive, because there were a lot of folks who could reasonably do it, but could not do it under the ordinance we had in place at that time. And beekeeping was really restricted to only like 10-acre plus-size farms. Like it was really one of those things you, effectively couldn't do in Southfield unless you had a farm, which, there's not too many of those left. And also there was some, because there were regulations in both the zoning ordinance and the animal chapter, there was lack of clarity on who had enforcement authority over this. So a lot of times someone would call in with an issue, and you would get a lot of, you know, like which department's supposed to respond to this. So that, those were what we, when we started, our goals were to like, make sure we were, keep avoiding nuisance effects, but allow backyard follow in a reasonable way, allow beekeeping in a reasonable way, which turned out is not actually that hard, and then make sure we had clear enforcement authority. So with the backyard follow, the current regulations I noted were very restrictive, very few people could meet those requirements. And then we went through the whole process with council and the Legislative Committee and the Planning Commission, and recently adopted these new regulations that allow still appropriate setbacks, coop sizes, limits on roosters and slaughter, numbers of chickens and keeping feed in vermin-resistant containers, all things that came up in our research as keys to preventing it from becoming a nuisance. And then for beekeeping, it turned out really wasn't too hard. You got to keep a water supply near the hive, and you really need a little bit of setback from surrounding properties, we put that in the general rules. And then honeybees are very docile, they're not like your ground-nesting wasps or your hornets, which are real unpleasant. Honeybees are actually pretty, like unless you actually squeeze one of them, they'll just bounce off you and fly away. So it wasn't much of an issue there, as long as you actually had them dispersed properly. It's actually harder to keep the hive healthy than it is to keep them being a nuisance. So when we did look at that, we looked at some setbacks and that water supply requirement. And this is what the new ordinance is, we're taking the language out of the zoning ordinance and just pointing to the new language that's in Chapter 113 that was adopted, approved at the last meeting that you're enacting tonight. And that way, it's clear that enforcement is through the animal ordinance, and the animal control officers, you know, animal wardens. And also because it's not in the zoning ordinance, it'll have, there'll be no grandfathering, like, the police ordinances don't have that. So if someone's not complying with the current ordinance, they've got to come into compliance with it. So just, if the council has any questions on this, I know we've been through it in multiple study meetings and public hearing, this is actually the public hearing for this part, but we had the discussion of the animals ordinance at several meetings. We do have to hold a public hearing, because this is a zoning ordinance, before we can actually enact or introduce the ordinance.
Alright, so we will have a public hearing, and then see how council feels. Alright, so this is a public hearing for PZ, I'm sorry, PTZA24-0004, zoning text amendment as you've seen on the screen. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
I guess nobody wants to speak but me. Myra Thomas, city resident. I believe that the only concern that I did have about this, I can't speak on, because you've already approved of the previous one, the, the new ordinance, not the removal of this one. And that is that it mentioned in this one, noisy and obnoxious, and the new one says you cannot have a rooster or any other file, and that's, I can't speak to that, because I wasn't here to do, to open counsel for that. And that's a sustainable thing, and because you say it's no slaughter, I think I spoke to some people before, the only way you can get these chickens is by going to like the big box stores, or going and ordering them. They do have minimums for how much you can purchase, usually it's four to eight chick minimums of, of purchase. So your ordinance kind of means that you are getting chickens, but you're not going to be able to keep them, because it's against the ordinance of the minimum of, I think, 10. And then not only that, but if you get any, and it comes, and it's roosters in them, now you are not even allowed to dispose of them, because they, you, you put in the ordinance that you can't slaughter them. So you're kind of stuck purchasing something that you can't keep on your property, and you can't dispose of it, because in the ordinance, you say you can't dispose of it. And that's not sustainable, because now you, every year you have to purchase it. I don't know if you know that, but every three years you must renew your, your flock, because your, because the egg-laying disposition is three years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the zoning ordinance? Text amendment? Alright, seeing none, public hearing is closed. We don't allow roosters, but if you buy one accidentally, you can always return it to the store, try and sell it, you don't necessarily just have to kill it to dispose of it. I don't know if there's anything else to, to add. So I'm going to look to the city attorney or the city planner, if you have anything.
Yeah, or rehome it to a more rural area that allows roosters. If you go a little further out to the townships that aren't part of cities, their rules are much more open, because they're rural.
Right, okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve PTZA24-0004 zoning ordinance text amendment, to amend Title 5, zoning and planning, Chapter 45.
Support. It has been ruled by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve PTZA24-0004, the zoning text amendment as presented here this evening. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1808.
Support. It has been ruled by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Cruz, to introduce ordinance number 1808. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1805.
Support. We have a motion...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Amendment to animal ordinance.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Cruz, to enact ordinance number 1805. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1806, amendment to Chapter 101, permit review, inspection, and appeal fees.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Cruz, to enact ordinance number 1806. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, we have council portion, we will start with Councilwoman Hope.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
Nothing this evening.
Councilman Cruz?
No, well, I will just say one thing, that Black History is the month, I should say, Black History Day. But February 21st was the anniversary of Malcolm X assassination, and it just really hit on me. And it's been on my mind, and if anybody didn't think about it, or hear about it, I'd implore you to take a moment, to maybe look up some information on him, or watch the movie. I watched it twice this week, I mean, in the last few days, directed by Spike Lee, is a very accurate depiction of the man who fought for justice for all of us, and very moving, and it just gave me more enthusiasm as elected official, that, to keep my mind on the job. So nonetheless, I just wanted to share that with you all, and I hope you all have a good rest of your Black History Month, and a good rest of the week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Haynes?
Yes, real quick, just wanted to remind everybody, in March, the bookshelf at the Southfield Public Library is having a book sale, it begins Wednesday, March the 5th, and it runs through that Saturday. And just a point of recognition for the Southfield Parks and Rec Department for their contribution during Black History Month, there was a program that I attended, a senior luncheon, and there was a young lady there portraying Shirley Chisholm, and it was an excellent program, and a lot of people attended. I think it's very good to see residents be able to come out to programs like this, like I said before, not just to celebrate during the month, but also to come together as a community, to bring awareness to a culture that we all share in, the successes and the problems that have had in the past history as well. And moving on that point, I was listening to some of the things about Shirley Chisholm, and being the first African-American woman to run for president, and some of the things that she said, and in one part she talked about peace, and I'll go refer to Dr. King, he said, be the peace you want to see in the world. And I think that's still key and important today, that we continue to remember, we should all, in this diverse culture, be the peace that we want people to see. And extending on Black History, one of our businesses has a Black History Month celebration, which is Thursday the 27th, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and that is Dedicated Senior Medical Center. And they ask that you join them to honor key figures, and his, and enjoy the entertainment, food, and refreshments, and just wanted to highlight them, because they are a business in Southfield, and that we support our businesses. And if you're interested, contact Kim Miller at 248-404-7563. And usually, like we talked before about those people dropping those comments and leaving, I'll keep, I'll continue to say this, you just need to be very careful what you say, especially when you're talking about people. And I got officially saying, I got a soul, and my soul is anchored, so I really need to let people know that, and I think a lot... And I think a lot of us up here have souls because we're human beings. And again, I'll speak for the rest, as we do care, like we said before, and we'll continue to say that, and we'll continue to do that by showing what we do, not perfect, not perfect at all, but working hard, again, to move Southfield forward. That's what we're looking to do in a diverse culture. As my colleague said, when you talk about DEI, you talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And he said, to say it, diversity, meaning the culture that we live in, we live in a diverse society and we like to keep Southfield that way. Equity, where we make sure we value that, also ensure that for others, and inclusion, we include all people. And that is so important today with all that's going on in the world, the one thing, at least from the ground, from the root, that we can keep it solid here in our community. And I think that is so important. And I'd like to commend one of our residents for coming forth and speaking with us in a private session, and he came in a very professional manner. And he also was humble enough to say that he had some errors in some things that he did, which I found very, very interesting because you very rarely see that. And I'd like to thank him for that and I appreciate that, just fessing up when, you know, you know that you can do better. And that's what we do here as well. Thank you so much. And like I said, peace.
All right. Just a couple housekeeping notes. This Friday, February 28th, is the, is the last day to pay your 2024 winter taxes with a penalty to the city treasurer. Starting March 1st, you will have to go to Oakland County and pay even more taxes with more penalties. So if you have not yet paid your winter taxes, please do so by the end of this week. The treasurer's office will be open until 5:00 p.m. on Friday to accept those payments. This information can also be found on the city's website, but the Southfield Police Academy returns for another nine-week program. It's in the Southfield Sun this week with our very own Councilwoman Haynes, who was a past participant. It's a great program for anyone learning, wants to learn the ins and outs of our police department, but you can contact the, if there is an application, contact the police department for more information. Also, Southfield is seeking public input for a new Detroit Institute of Arts mural that they want to place outside of the ICE arena. There's just a little form to fill out with what you may like to see. Again, that form, you could find it on the city's homepage, so we can get input from the community of what they would like to see there. And then don't forget that starting next week, 696 between Loser and I-75 will be a nightmare for many of us in Southfield, since it's a long stretch in Southfield. But westbound, I'm sorry, eastbound will be closed. I keep getting it confused. Eastbound will be closed entirely. Our police department will be ready and waiting if you try to speed through our neighborhood streets or major streets, 10-mile, 11-mile, 12-mile, trying to avoid the posted detours.
Is it going to be closed completely or what?
No.
The entire.
The whole thing.
The entire, eastbound will be closed. They're not doing two-way traffic. If you look at the posted detour, it takes you all the way, I think, down to the Davison. But please do not speed through our neighborhood streets or any of our streets in Southfield. We, we would not like to take your money and give you a speeding ticket. We want our residents and our businesses and our visitors to be safe. So please plan ahead for the additional traffic. Generally, the first two weeks of a construction project, I have been told, are the worst because everyone's getting used to it. At least that's what we find when we do road closures and construction within our city streets. But please be cautious, take time, learn new routes for the next two years. And again, more of this information can be found on our website. All right?
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just wanted to say something to the mayor before he spoke. That picture of.
Charles McGee?
Emmett Till.
Yes. It's so striking. I mean, I don't know who did that, but when I, soon as I hit the door, I just, I couldn't even move anymore for a minute. And so I really commend all the work that you all have done. I mean, there's, there's great art all the way through here, but that really got me, you know.
Thank you. Our reception for the artists was last Thursday night. It was joined by Councilwoman Hoag and Haynes. And we had introduction of all the artists, including one of our favorites, Hubert Massey. The young lady whose work is right outside the door here, early twenties and.
Self-taught.
I'm sorry?
She was self-taught.
Phenomenal use of color and shading. The figure that's running, look, I mean, looks like he's ready to jump right off the camp, of the canvas. So again, this art, thank you, Councilman, for bringing that up. This art will be on display for three months, March and April, plus this month, obviously. So I want to pick up on a couple of things that Councilman Cruz and Haynes had to say. First of all, we had a pretty robust series of events for Black History Month. Yesterday, I attended the Parks and Rec movie showing of Shirley Chisholm's run for president. It was 1971-72 documentary. I mean, I lived through that, but I either didn't remember or was reminded of, or didn't know some of the things in the film. We had a good turnout yesterday, about 45 people showed up for the film. And congratulate Parks and Rec on putting these programs together, especially the diversity of the programs. I also yesterday attended Hope United Methodist Church and they had the mobile African-American History Museum, a phenomenal collection of things going back a couple centuries on African-American history in the United States. The triumphs and the tribulations in both. The other thing I wanted to mention, and it kind of taps into what Councilwoman Haynes was talking about, I know some of the council members and certainly my office has had a number of inquiries reaching out to us about what's going on nationally. And I'm talking about the Trump administration with deportations as well as DEI. And people are concerned. They wanted to know, as a caller last week, who has married, it's an interracial relationship, they're married, they live here, but the green card wasn't renewed and are afraid that they may have to leave Southfield, to either go to Canada or Mexico. And there've been other calls like this. I want to repeat, and I confirmed this last week with Police Chief Barron, that Southfield police are not part of deportation. They, we are not a sanctuary city. Eight years ago, council approved a welcoming city resolution. We welcome immigrants to this city, part of our diversity. We are not a sanctuary city because we didn't want to get embroiled in that, but we did want to make a statement, and it's true today, that we support immigrants who have moved here legally, are documented. And our police department does not question somebody about their citizenship if they are stopped or investigated. And would only cooperate with ICE if ICE requested backup, they'd be on a standby. They would not be part of any kind of raid or whatever. So I also then, I've had a number of questions, and I think this was mentioned by the city administrator, but I want to repeat it. The city of Southfield is not retreating from DEI. We are not retreating from DEI. And people have asked, you know, because of all the headlines that that's gotten. We, so I want to bring up that there is a boycott, an economic boycott for, announced for this Friday, to purchase nothing, to make, and this is in response to the economic power of our pluralistic society and that not to purchase anything for all-day Friday for the 40, the 24-hour period from midnight Thursday to midnight Friday night. I'm highly disappointed in McDonald's and Target for their, I would call it cowardice, for backing off on DEI. And when you consider how many of the jobs that these companies, and they're, through their franchises in different locations, the people that they employ and the diversity within their ranks, to me, it's very sad that they would. So if you absolutely have to purchase something on Friday, go to a mom and pop or an independent, and I'd even say go to Costco, which had the courage to stand up and say, no, we are continuing with our DEI practices. But I certainly, and I'm asking people to join me, I will not be purchasing anything this Friday. Thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you. I just, I'll add that save your money by not purchasing anything on Friday. And then on Sunday, March 9th, Southfield's having our Winter Fest, which there is a small fee for residents and non-residents. So the money you save on Friday, please use on Sunday, March 9th, from 2:00 to 4:30. Free ice, well, for the fee, there will be ice skating, carriage rides, marshmallow roasting, a whole bunch of different things. Again, information can be found on our website through Parks and Rec. It's always a great time. Thank you. With that, city administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just thank my public works crew for their snow removal, including Parks and Rec for their work in clearing our parks and our municipal campus here as well. Staff is involved in putting our budget together for next year, so we are in budget hearings, a long and grueling process where we review everything from org charts, the last three years' worth of fiscal spending in the departments and wish lists, time-consuming process, but an exercise we go through annually. We look forward to presenting that document to city council. I'd like to also thank my Parks and Rec Department for their execution so far in the Black History Month. I think the, we've had some excellent events. The library has also had some outstanding events for folks to take care of. Just want to comment on the mayor's comments. I, once, when the DEI conversation first started, I was being hit daily, especially when the executive order came down. And our position is we're doubling down, we're keeping the position as well as the training and that that we're doing for our staff. And it has been an excellent investment, getting, you know, we have 600-plus employees all from different backgrounds, different faiths, different religions, different orientations. It takes a lot to keep people recognizing that we have a common human experience and need to continue to work together. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening. I have nothing else to add tonight. Have a good night.
All right. Madam Clerk?
I have nothing tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Planner?
Nothing additional this evening, sir.
All right. We heard from our sister earlier, nothing else to schedule. Again, just please be patient for the 696 construction, plan accordingly. Our meeting is adjourned.